Good morning, everybody. Start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll have Michelle Schmidt start it off.
I, by the legion of citizens of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as we're on.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting of July 3rd. We're meeting here on a Wednesday because tomorrow's holiday. And in the room, we have Michelle Schmidt.
I saw that.
Allison Kevakovsky, we have Commissioner Coyle.
Good morning.
Daudu, Marila, and Chuck Necerson and myself. On Zoom, we have Catherine Mann, I see Kathy Stacy, Jude Gates, Superintendent Henry, Chuck Mercedes, Sheriff. And I think that's it. So we'll start the meeting with RFP openings for administration building painting.
I move to award the proposal for administration paint building painting to certified pro painters in Portsmouth for an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-four cents, as recommended by the Assistant Director of Facility Operations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Daudu.
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, we're already on to consent.
A light week on the holiday week. I move to approve the June twentieth, twenty twenty-four public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second, excuse me. Motion made and seconded. Any additions to action on the minutes?
Look good. Thank you, Bella.
On the motion, Commissioner Daudu.
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Hey, all.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million seven hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-two cents for the period ending June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion.
Well, just, uh, just a comment as Chuck pointed out to us and for everybody in Zoom land, this is about a little over four hundred thousand dollars higher than normal. And the reason is because it's the HSA, uh, yeah, payment. It's benefits comes out of this. Just so everybody knows why we're so off so much. If we look at our recent payrolls, they're running right around one point three and change. And this is that four hundred thousand dollars that kind of.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Daudu.
Yes.
Yes. On the thoughts, any of you have anything to report?
Um, well, I'll just say, uh, I don't have anything, uh, major, but just to wish everybody a wonderful fourth of July. Um, you know, I, um, little a nod to, uh, Kendra and Michelle, who have been, uh, really stepped up and sort of, uh, taking the helm over in long-term care. So thank you for that, um, kind of, you know, making it the seamless transition and, um, otherwise, uh, I wish everybody a wonderful Fourth of July and hopefully everybody gets to spend some time with family.
Can you go anything?
Uh, sure. Uh, first of all, I'll wish everybody a happy Independence Day. Um, and hope you all have a healthy and, uh, fun time. Uh, I have continued my conversation with, um, uh, Food Service, Glendale, uh, and we will, we can expect a presentation next week, uh, from, from, uh, Jim. And, um, in general, uh, the, the, it kind of looks like if we double the cost, hundred percent increase on the menu, minus, I identified a bunch that looked like they were too expensive. Um, and we reduce the hours of operation, it will reduce our contribution from around five hundred thousand to around two hundred thousand. Um, so I think he has a reasonable plan to present to us and we'll all take a look at it, uh, next week. And however you want to proceed, you know, we'll, let's just, I just acted as a catalyst to get him to do something. And, um, I think that they're on the right track.
Well, thank you for your efforts on that. That's really great.
Yeah, I, I like that program. It's the one I looked at as well, a hundred percent. Um, it kind of puts us back to where it originally started. Uh, yes, there's still a subsidy from the, from the county, but it's, um, when the original is. What I would like to see in a future contract would be if we get back to that, we all agree to that. Moving forward, um, tying in any yearly increases to inflation, just so we don't get back into this half million dollar, you know, we went from one eighty to half a million, which was not sustainable. So we want to work. I don't have anything else, but, uh, so let's build an inmate administrative.
The municipal approved an inmate administrative transfer dated July first, twenty twenty-four, transferred from one inmate from Carroll County Department of Corrections, one inmate to, uh, Stratford County Department of Corrections and receiving one inmate from Stratford County Department of Corrections pursuant to Hampshire RSA thirty dash B colon twenty-one as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion, Commissioner Daudu.
Yes.
Yes.
You vote yes. Bid waiver request, S P Rankin.
I move to, uh, approve the S P Rankin proposal and bid waiver request in the amount of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars for the supply and install of one storage shed for the wastewater treatment facility as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I do have a couple of things. One, I mean, I think this, even though it is technically a bid waiver request, I think it's important to know that this was, it, it wasn't the standard RFP bid process because for step sheds, people don't come to like do site visits. So that's part of the reason. But in terms of soliciting bids, there were three bet bids, um, solicited, um, this was the lowest one, um, by quite a bit. And I guess my question for Jude is, do we feel like, and I was kind of looking at the material list that the quality of the material is going to be there from a price standpoint?
We, we think we're okay with it, yes. And we can do the, um, prep work for the slab. Um, they'll pour it, but they're letting us do part of the work, which will help as well.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, it's like half the price of, yeah, so it's, it's really economical. So, um, to the extent that it's a bid waiver, it's kind of, uh, in a technical sense rather than a actual sense.
I, I would agree. This isn't a typical bid waiver and I, I, I'm scratching my head while Reese shed, very, Reese very shed look like double boss with this. I don't know what they will give us in addition, but good job soliciting the bids.
Thanks, Jude.
Thank you, guys.
On the motion, Commissioner Daudu.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
I vote yes. Finance Office, um, this is the FY twenty twenty-five mail allowance for conferences.
Yes, uh, well, um, I should, are we gonna, do you want to start with the discussion first or?
Motion first, then we go into discussion typically.
Okay, that's fine.
We want to make some.
Uh, I move to approve, well, do we have a proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five out of state? The policy, have we updated the policy?
That's what.
That's the discussion. Yeah.
And the needed modification or proposed.
Well, which is why I thought we were going to discuss it before we make a motion.
Yeah, this motion doesn't say.
Sure. So I think that's why we have to have the discussion first and then make the motion on the, what we're doing.
Why? You can make the motion and have discussion.
Uh, I move to approve, the thing is, what are we?
We're not voting on it until after discussion, so you can still make the motion.
I move to approve the proposed, what is the proposed?
Fiscal year twenty twenty-five out of state training and travel policy and modification for paragraph one of section sixteen fourteen of the Rockingham County Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance and the Senior Director of Human Resources.
So where is that document?
Should be in your packet.
I didn't, I haven't had a chance to see this. When will this come in today?
No, no. I didn't see it in the packet either from a, it was added late. Um, yesterday. Okay, so.
Well, okay, so.
That's where I think I was under the impression that we were having a discussion about what that change was going to be and then make the motion. I didn't realize, I guess I missed this.
Okay, you want to table it? So you guys have more time to look at it.
Have you looked at it? You've not looked, yeah? What do you think?
I like it.
What is?
What do you think?
I haven't seen it.
Okay.
It's just, uh, it's a brief moment. So I think we should just table it.
All right. So do you want to make that motion?
Oh, I see. I think I, did you, did we get the, I mean, I see.
Do you want to make a motion to, till next week?
No, we can do it till later in the meeting. We just need a few minutes to review. I think what happened is I reviewed the, this, yeah. Um, so I'll, we'll just move to table it for the moment, then we can decide.
Motion to table.
Second.
And seconded. Motion, first on the motion, Commissioner Daudu.
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yeah, it came in, we got this at four thirty.
All right. Uh, let's see, human resources, FY twenty twenty-five signal wellness fund, even addition.
I move to authorize utilization of ten thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty twenty-five signal wellness fund to purchase equipment for the employee fitness center as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion made and seconded and a discussion. Seems, seeing them on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Daudu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Exception request.
Uh, I move to approve an exception request to open enrollment deadline for a long-term care employee PD.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, just that this is in relation to an opt-in for, um, for long-term disability for disability and this, uh, individual has utilized it historically and it was just a scriptner's error, if you will. So I think this is an instance where, um, I, I'm in support of it just because there's a history of opting in. She's going, it's an out-of-pocket expense on her part. So there's not really a huge impact to the county and, um, and it seems like it was just an error oversight when making that determination.
On the, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Daudu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Long-term care services. Granite State Music Therapy Agreement.
I move to approve the Granite State Music Therapy Agreement renewal in the amount of eight hundred and eighty per week for the period beginning August twenty-fourth through, twenty twenty-four through August twenty twenty-five.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
How does this compare from the pricing for, uh, historically? So we're paying eight eighty per week. What was the last contract?
That I'm not sure of. I only have the most recent contract with me.
I was just, I mean, I think we're in support of it. I was just trying to get a sense of, I'm changing things.
On the motion, Commissioner Daudu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Generally, I think just from, uh, following up regardless, like music therapy is a wonderful thing for our residents and really good for stimulation. And there's a lot of evidence.
Um, and they really, they really gear the program to different care levels as well. So everybody really benefits from it, not just a particular.
Yes, it's a really great program. I'm sure maybe you can bring in Commissioner Goodd to.
Come and say.
All right. Um, so now we're at the department head updates. Do you guys? The table of.
Well, we can come back under new business, old business if you want.
Okay.
That was my intention. I'd like a discussion on it.
Yeah.
So department head updates and I'm gonna start, I'll start with the sheriff's office. Morning.
Yeah. Good morning. Happy Fourth of July, everybody. Uh, we continue to be busy over here and nothing really new to report this week. But have a good, uh, Fourth of July and a good weekend. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Jude Gates. Welcome back.
Thank you. I, I did want to take a moment just to thank the commissioners again for your consideration in hiring an assistant director. I had such a wonderful time last week. It was very relaxing and Rich did a wonderful job, even with a couple of really major projects. He did a beautiful job. So thank you very much. Um, I got a letter yesterday from DES regarding well number four. It was very, very promising. Um, they're in, they intend to issue the permit. He said that twice in the letter. They've asked us to gather more data from well number two, which is not an issue. We can take care of that. And, um, they're giving us permission to convert well number two to a monitoring well for a PFAS. So only more than one bird at a time and, um, except for the northeastern metal rack. Um, so yeah, it's going really well. Robin, um, spent a lot of time last week working on some really major network upgrades. I think some of it is still filtering done. I'm having a little bit of slowness in my machine here today, but by all accounts, it seems like things have really speeded up quite a bit. She spent a lot, a lot of work last week. So other than that, all is and thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Jude. Superintendent Henry.
Morning, everybody. Uh, we're one forty-five in house today. Um, with the new contract going through and autumn changing, uh, indeed, we had quite a few, um, interested candidates, which is good. So um, we'll be going forward and getting them in for interviewing. Um, picked up the box truck, which is great. Uh, Officer Evans took pictures through it. He's learning how to use the lift gate. And once we have everything put into a binder and teach some people, we'll get it online and, um, stop the other old box truck. Uh, I'm assuming everybody saw that the Sackler family, um, their, their settlement was, um, denied by the, uh, but it's for your court. So that ten billion dollars in opiate abatement money is on hold. They're gonna have to go back to the table again and kind of figure that out. Um, so that's going to impact what's coming into the state. And beyond that, happy Fourth of July and thank you, everybody.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, let me go to, what's to do with long-term care?
I think we'll both conquer.
Both, okay.
First. Sure. Um, so from an assisted living standpoint, occupancy still is high. We're sitting at forty residents with a waitlist of twenty, um, applicants long. Um, and then as far as new business goes for long-term care, um, we have received requests for, from Easter shows and Silver Thorn for adult medical daycare. So we're just looking for some guidance from you all on how you would like to disperse that money between them two. Yeah, I think we should begin that conversation. Do we want to take that up now or do we want to take that up during new business? Either new business, okay. So we'll just, but I, thanks.
So, uh, long-term care is great. Everything is, uh, survey ready. So we're just awaiting our visitors for a survey, um, but everything looks great. All of our items are all online. Um, um, Fourth of July is tomorrow and we have the residential health on the, um, company bus. So there'll be long-term care and assisted living residents participating in the parade. So they're super excited about that. Yeah, it is. They're all so excited. Um, I do have two pieces of informational, um, such as follow-ups on, um, one is the federal grant, um, for the delay of deferred institutional, um, care. And I do have, I didn't submit them, but these are just the monthly reports, just for information. Made three copies of them. Um, everything, um, what I've been told is on track. They're meeting their deadlines and everything looks great with no issues of concern. So the timeline and all the progress is on that report. And then the second thing is I had a conference call, um, this week. It was on, late on Monday, um, with Exeter Hospital and they proposed a new ACO sniff waiver program that would allow us to take residents from the community or residents who have admitted to the hospital but not met three-day overnight stay for sniff stay. Um, so it is a program that they're proposing to start at the beginning of twenty twenty-five. They're drafting up the, um, ACO agreement now and we'll be forwarding it over to T M D Duffy through admissions for review and then for presentation for you as well. So again, this is just informational paperwork from CMS, sort of the benefits of the program and how it would help these residents or the community access healthcare without needing that three-day waiver stay.
That's great.
Nice.
Yep.
Um, going to the Allison's, great.
Hi, um, we're doing well. Um, we are now into the data, data entry zone of all of the changes for color and stuff to get those over for the next paid period. We've closed out this paid period with a few hiccups, uh, on both sides of the house, but we've worked it well through. Um, we did discover that we are still outstanding. We did discover that there's an MOU that has to be done, um, that it just got beyond Chuck and I with all the MOUs that we're doing. Um, we're working together on that. Um, it has to do with the, oh, Tom, Chuck, is that what it is?
The, um, the O C C O's and team choosing and being okay with, um, tenants and the assistance of tenant to be able to take, um, voluntary overtime shifts when the COs had turned it down and the corporal sergeants and community products manager have also turned it down in order to afford the mandatory time.
Which is a good thing. So we're working on that and hoping to get that out of the grade today. Um, we did, um, conduct our first round, uh, interviews with, uh, long-term care administrative candidates. Um, we're moving pretty quickly forward next week with, uh, hopefully a tour and with the second level leadership, uh, having a meet and greet with them. Um, and then we'll be on from there. Um, additional information will be coming forward to the board. So we're moving pretty quickly through that process with, you know, very much integrity, uh, done to it. Very good input from all, you know, all the staff that have, um, been a part of it, the corporate, the corporate has been to work with. So yes, that's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Allison. All right. Chuck, welcome back.
Thank you. Um, as kind of blew too back from vacation. So I keep my report short, but anyways. Um, just, uh, wanted to thank Autumn, uh, that she actually found two through her efforts, two additional, uh, grant writer candidates. So hoping to, uh, work for the same folks as last time to help out with the first round of interviews for two other candidates now. And, uh, they're both fairly local and they both have grant experience, one a bit more than the other one, but, um, but we'll see how that goes. So hopefully one of those two will be in the finalists and then they can make an offer too. So fingers crossed through that because there's obviously a lot of current activity going on. Um, yes, the payroll was a bit difficult. Obviously, a little bit more difficult too was that because of the July fourth holiday, we kind of lost one day of processing deadline for the direct deposit. So that made Tuesday be the deadline for that. Um, overall, just very busy getting ready for year-end prep. Um, Andrea's been working on putting together the delegation approved budget packs, which packets which actually have to go out by thirty days after the approval of the delegation of the budget has to go out to all thirty-seven Rockingham County communities, the DRA and a few other, um, state double priorities. And, uh, that's, I'll just stop there. Just getting my feet wet again.
All right, then I go to Marila.
Good morning. Um, so I just want to remind everyone that now that fiscal year twenty twenty-four is done, um, we need to start looking at our annual reports and a big thank you.
Happy. You are like the tenth annual champion of your.
Kathy gets the gold shot.
She, every year she does.
Turned it in yesterday. She got on vacation last week.
And it was an excellent report. She briefed and to the point.
Yeah.
So they are, they are due by Friday, September twenty-seventh in Word format, preferably. If it has to be in PDF, please make sure there are no page numbers on it.
Send it in Word. It'll be easy. Send it in Word.
Kathy, sorry I missed you.
No problem. Happy Fourth of July, everybody. Um, you know, I have, obviously we have a lot of people on vacation, but I will tell you that the transfer tax stamps this week are crazy and it's all property, believe it or not, in Rhine, New Hampshire. It is unbelievable. Yeah. Yeah, it is, it is huge, huge. But anyway, yeah, so other than that, I hope you all have a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I don't know who's in the middle. I can't see.
Robin, really.
Is it Robin? All right, Robin.
A member of the public.
Oh, as a member of, okay. All right. So we're all set then for the. Um, all right. So now I'm going to go to new business, old business.
Do you want to sum up the, what you're, the change?
You can do it.
No, no, go ahead. So you, we had a little more time.
Okay, so now we're gonna take that off the table. So I'll take a motion to take off the table. The meal allowance for conferences discussion.
So moved.
All of the favors, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Paige. I don't have the page.
I, I kind of.
Okay, so this is, um, this is from Chuck Necerson, Senior Director of Finance. Uh, this is an executive summary recommending that the fiscal year twenty twenty-five out of state training and travel policy be default effective July one, Board of Commissioners approve for conferences is not required if the training and trust, if the training and travel has been budgeted appropriated. Total cost does not exceed one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per attendee, is located within the six among the states and does not require airfare. Uh, the changes, um, are highlighted in, in red.
There's other change. So as I understand it, there's two changes, right? We're going to do meals at a hundred percent for the first day. And then with respect to the attendance, it was previously last fiscal year eleven hundred and now we're moving it up fifty bucks to eleven fifty to accommodate the inflationary cost difference. Conferences are a thousand bucks. Is that?
Yeah, so, so see, national CPI went up by three point three percent May twenty-four versus May twenty-three. And technically, yes, the fifty dollar increase over the eleven hundred is a little bit more than three percent. But as is mentioned later on in the discussion, if you have a conference that's three days or more, even in-state, your registration alone could be a thousand dollars. Yeah, so it's.
So the idea that we're doing it on the first day because there's longer travel on the first day as opposed to the last.
Yes, and just even from my own personal experience, probably Allison's and others have done conferences that the first day of travel, often there's, there's conference events, maybe not sessions, but there's events later on that first day of travel as well. So, and I only avail myself for those and for others too. So.
For the discussion?
Yes, um, first of all, um, it says for an overnight conference, ninety dollars per day for food. Is that the same as last year?
No, that's, that's a three percent, three point three percent.
What was it last year?
It was eighty-seven.
It's just the, in, so this bottom part is inflationary and the top part was just the four and a, a little over.
A little bit more, four and a half percent versus a three point three.
Well, what, what concerns me with the way this has been presented to us is I get the red line part, uh, that has changes, but it's referencing amounts that are not referenced, like the amounts being proposed for fiscal year twenty twenty-five reflect inflationary adjustments.
Right.
I don't know where those amounts are.
They're just.
Or is it only these amounts for the meal and the total? Are both the only amounts involved?
Amounts have changed. So the meals ones were purely a three point three percent. The eleven hundred to eleven fifty, that is technically a four and a half percent. But again, in the discussion sections mentioned that really your registration alone, if it's three days or more, it's going to be a thousand or more, generally speaking, because most conferences are not like Primex.
So all this is doing is adding fifty dollars to the, uh, threshold of whether somebody needs to have a, uh, approval by the board.
Correct.
And, uh, three dollars a day for meal.
Correct, correct.
And nothing else really has changed. Okay, I thought I was going to see a whole schedule of items, but this is good. I'm, I'm, I'm okay. I just didn't read it before the meeting.
We braided it. Uh, everybody's waiting because it takes effect July one and some people are trying to schedule their conferences now. So I'm trying to be quickly.
Do you want to call them?
And there's a related change. The Personal Policies and Procedures, section sixteen, fourteen, paragraph I, because that also cites about, uh, a change for the, the meal allowance hundred percent being allowed for the first day of air travel.
Right.
But still fifty percent for the.
Fantastic. But just for the first day. It makes sense.
So I'm going to have to, believe it or not, this will be my first revision to the PPPs that I made from twenty. I have to redo them and revise them and send them out there. So just so you know.
Thank you.
Electronically, right?
Yes. Because that don't have hard copies. So I have to provide some.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
All right, you want to come on the motion?
Yes, on the motion, uh, Coyle.
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Any other new business?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so two things, as Kendra mentioned, um, we do have the, the funding for the two agencies, so we're going Easter sales and looking for their distribution of my percentages. So we just need to get back to them and let them know some of the guidance as far as how we distribute that money.
So do we have, uh, how, how much money have we budgeted for that?
It's a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand?
Yes, same size.
And it used to be among three different groups and now there's just two. So there's different percentages and distribution that's needed.
Do we, I mean, my question is, do we have, are the, the, and are, are you have other things? Did you, I didn't.
Well, my only other. Well, my only other comment on that was why, what's, why is it necessary?
To do a district.
To, to give them a budgeted number. As far as I'm concerned, they should be applying. For whatever is appropriate and we can decide whether we have enough money. Because it's been in past, very unbalanced between the various agencies.
And we can anticipate usage.
Yeah, we don't know what the, how that balance is gonna go and I don't want. One of the, one of the agencies to feel restricted because they think they've hit their bounds. We had a lot of discussion about that in previous years. So to me, I, I would just tell them to send in whatever applications they have. They're all Rockingham County residents will approve or disapprove. Mostly approve, I'm sure. Um, and I don't think that we need to designate fifty thousand dollars specifically to Easter Seals or, you know, to Silver Thorn. Thirty-five or whatever.
Maybe we start with something because I think that, and I agree with you, that's kind of generally my thought, but maybe we start with a distribution so they can feel like they can get started and they feel confident. Like we put thirty thousand into each. And so that would get to our sixty. They're just two functional. So if we just take thirty and put it into each one. And then leave a pool of forty thousand dollars. Chuck, you look like you might have something to share.
Why I, I think he's going as that. They see these as like established grants actually in their eyes. It isn't to us. Right, so, so they actually want certainty. I think that's what they're looking for is certainty. And what happened was on the old. Formula, we tried to make it easier for them that like before, if it was forty, forty, twenty, that's what the split used to be as far as. Senior class Silver Thorn and then Easter Seals, but then Easter Seals went full time. And then if you look at the split that's happened recently in twenty twenty four, it's like a sixty forty split. Actually, Easter Seals being the way.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and so what it seems to, again, they're looking for certainty and what we have on the invoice template is that they had. A, and a, a total allocation and then off of which were all the prior invoices and then they were left with. The current running amount and then from the current invoicing was that amount was deducted as well, leaving an ultimate amount. So they're looking for, I think, certainty on their side, but that's.
And I wasn't privy to, uh, prior conversations or such, but I do think I, and I agree with you, I think there's been some discrepancies in the monies and how the two organizations are spending the monies. So I think that needs to be evaluated as well.
Yeah, I would just say that we have a hundred thousand in the kitty. There's no set allocation. We're gonna look at applications like. Just as they come in. I don't think we've denied any.
But I wonder if.
I just say this too, right now, we have a hundred thousand, but it's not, you're not getting, you know, you're not guaranteed X amount. You just, we're paying as we go.
But listen to what, to, to the extent that Chuck said they want certainty, they see it as a grant. Could we give them, just, we know that there's going to be a certain threshold of spending. That's why, you know, maybe it's forty, maybe it's thirty, but we keep a, a portion unreserved for usage, but. Then they have that, it balances the certainty against the variability.
The other caveat is the money that we have on the other program. The state platform, we're able to use some of that money for the same thing, so. I, I think we have plenty of money. I, I, I say we approve as the commissioners approve as we go along. Let them put the requests in and. We can approve.
I think that we've given a misconception to the uh, various organizations by actually allocating a budget to them. Uh, and that misconception is that they're getting a grant for thirty or fifty thousand dollars uh, towards this. And they kept keeping track of how much, you know, each agency went. I think it's a waste of our time to be doing that. I think it's simple that we just tell them that we have a hundred thousand dollars allocated. They don't have to worry about. Uh, the certainty of things getting approved. Most things will get approved. Uh, but. They should, we're not, I don't want to budget personally. I don't think we should budget a certain amount. And tell them that we're giving them fifty thousand dollars in advance. I'd rather see each application and approve it uh, accordingly. Now, that, that's on that discussion. A little bit separate from that is the state. Uh, uh, grant that we got for keeping people at home. Um, I don't know what's going on with that and I'm not sure. It, it seems like there's some overlap with this program here. But I suspect there's some different parameters that we're, that we need to fulfill with that program. I, I, I. Would like to hear a discussion at some point, maybe not today, of exactly what's going on with that program.
We only have one employee in that program right now. We still have not got a transporter and the other two positions filled. That has gone flat. We're not getting any activity on that. So I want to be upfront with you on that because on the recruitment end of that, I have some concerns that we have one person out there trying to facilitate this whole thing.
So what's the one person that we have?
Coordinator.
Yeah.
Manager or something.
Yeah.
So we have a program coordinator.
Right.
Yes.
But we don't have anybody yet to do the work outside.
We don't have the underlines from him too, like, you know, the dotted line and the transporters.
So who's heading up this program now?
I think it is, it's John Jess. Just go in.
I, 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 I probably. I'm probably gonna step in and me too, because I know about the brand, but I also want to understand the recruitment end of things and how we can help facilitate a little bit more. So try to get that up.
I, why don't we put this on the agenda for next week so that we can have a more robust conversation with respect to the program? Um, you know, on the discrete, um, Chuck, did you have something else to add about? Um, the medical day and the allocation?
Well, a, again, I think. We've never advertised as grand.
Yeah.
We've been clear that as many grants, just that sometimes as far as, and this often times happens for nonprofits that they'll see. This, you know, government entity giving them money, that's a claim, but it's not. Um, again, I think that what. Those entities are looking for some sort, you know, again, amount of money that, yeah, this certainty that they are just because of how their funding is on their, on their side, but. Um. I mean, we'll just, I mean, the invoice is not to be modified, that there's no like running total of what they have left to spend per se.
I mean, I see the concern from their perspective of their enrolling people. You know, and, you know, they don't want to take someone in who's next month gonna be kicked at the, from a practice, their perspective, they're like, they're running the, the operation and they're bringing people in. That might have to leave in a short order. And so from their operation standpoint and their numbers and management, I can see the reason they would want some level of certainty on. How, you know, the amount of support they can offer. So that's where I feel like there is a baseline that we, we know we're going to give a certain baseline of money. That would give them some confidence in bringing people in. That, you know, that's why I think it makes sense not to distribute all of it, but say, hey, you're, you're locked in at this. For the year, we're as additional people, you know, you can make those applications, we'll draw against it and if you need more. You know, we want that, that. You know, account for that variability.
I think it's important to note that between the two, one is reimbursed or they bill for a higher rate than the other. My understanding is that Silver Thorn has a much lower rate that they're requesting for payment than Easter Seals does based on who they accept for insurance. So Easter Sales, as we're looking back over the past year, Easter Sales is asked, is utilizing more of the monies.
But fewer.
But, but for fewer people, be, my understanding is because their rate of what they're charging and requesting from us is so high.
Why is it so much higher?
It's supposed to be ten dollars per day for Medicaid and then I thought, well, one of the two did bring in a request to get another five dollars per day.
Silver Thorn.
Yeah, Silver Thorn accepts Medicaid and Easter Sales does not. So they're requesting at the whole day. So when we're looking at the distribution, Easter Sales, even if they have three people compared to Silver Thorns and they have ten. If they're only servicing three, three applicants, they're gonna go through that monies quicker. So that's just something to note as might be. Might be important if we're, we are really considering allocation of a hundred thousand dollars, that it might not be distributed correctly to the consumers in need. Um, depending on payer source.
So are most of these people then individual proof grants, just the original programs, we. Ten dollars per day for Medicaid.
Right.
With one of this five dollar change. Then basically anyone else would be approved on a case by case basis because those were slightly over resourcing all five through Medicaid. Or those are eligible for some other, you know, state program as well for AFC.
I can speak on behalf of Easter Sales because I was a payer to them. Um, a lot of families do not, um. Uh, qualify for subsidies or anything, so they're private pay. They're paying private out of pocket services.
Right, so that's why I'm asking, are these your sales ones and all individual approvals by the board?
I don't. I would have to go back and look at that.
Kathy has all that information. She shared it with me yesterday and the numbers are really skewed. They really are. And I know, you know, they submit to her monthly and she sees the numbers and they're very, very different between the two and the, the amount of money is what it is.
And it's because they don't accept. Easter Sales doesn't accept Medicaid. So for one resident, you're paying seventy dollars more a day.
Oh my.
For one another.
Okay.
All right, so the discussion next week.
That's emphasizing to me why I don't want to allocate dollars.
I agree. I, we have to.
Needs to be reviewed.
And we have to remember, this is a budget item for the county. It's not a grant, like.
Right, so we, it's our job to manage the hundred thousand.
Yeah, and you know what? If they can't deal with that, that's, that's their issue, not us. So. And I mean, who's to say, well, hold on, who's to say another party can't come in? You know, I don't want to say, you're getting fifty, you're getting fifty and then someone else comes in. I don't want to play that game. I just want to say, if you have an application submitted, the commissions will look at it and will approve it as they come in.
I, I don't, um, I don't think anyone was saying fifty fifty. I think there might, what, at least with respect to, we have two. There's, I mean, this, this is a road we, you know, when I started, there were four uh, different organizations offering the service and now we're down to two, I guess. Um. And particularly with Silver Thorn because they offer Medicaid. Um, and so like they're the only organization in our county supporting Medicaid. Residents and that concerns me.
That's concerning.
That's very concerning and because, you know, the private pay are still people who. They're private pay because they don't qualify for Medicaid. So it's, they have more resources available to have services. I, what I, what I'm hearing from you is we need to make sure. We give confidence to Silver Thorn, you know, that we are going to support them, like we are to, to keep them sustainable. So. I'm okay even just saying dumping some money to just making a single allocation to Silver Thorn at this point. I mean, because this is an organization, they need to know. You know, we are going to support them so we can keep those Medicaid residents serviced.
I, I'll bet it's Easter Seals though that is really more concerned because they are the ones coming up with all the money. We, we're not gonna, we're not gonna refuse anybody fifteen dollars a day. Uh, at Silver Thorn, but if they get private pay and they're looking for, you know, if they think they've got more money, then maybe they'll start asking for a hundred percent reimbursement. For what they're saying, well, it's within our budget and, and, and I want to avoid that.
I agree.
Assumption. And it is very concerning that there's only one Medicaid uh, supplier, uh, provider. Uh, in the county and maybe we ought to reach out a little bit someplace to see who else might be able to offer that service. And tell them that we have some support for you if you. Um, and maybe that's part of the other state program too, that, 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 you know, the, the pilot program to, to. Generate more places where this is available.
So.
Um, I mean, I agree. I think, you know, Medicaid recipients have lesser resources and I think Silver Thorn really services those individuals. Um, you know, and it looks like, yes, they use less money, but you know, they're, they're seeing a, a large volume of, of residents, um. Where Easter Sales is spending a lot more money and providing services to a lot smaller groups.
Do you think, um, as part of next week's continued discussion, we could get that data, Kathy has that data about? Because I think that would, um, help direct our conversation.
Yeah, she showed up to me. So she has the numbers on how many people are serviced, how many days actually access the services and the amounts.
So, yeah, we can, we can.
Yeah.
To have a cost per resident per day. That would be valuable.
I can get that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Very good. So is there any additional new business?
Yeah, the, um, the other thing was the strategic planning program that we had, uh, that had gone through, I know over the past year with, um, Barry Dunn. Um, I know that the representative from there wasn't aware of Jason's leaving either. So they've been reaching out to Elaine and we just want to know, is it something we should be pursuing or should we be waiting to onboard the new administrator?
Yeah, I think, I think that we are not going to wait until we have. The new administrator man, so you're taking them.
Yeah.
We had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, that we was going to dedicate towards that and it got pulled because. It went to the salary line, so I'm not sure that we're budgeted for this item at the moment.
We're not.
So, yeah, we're not funded, right? So definitely it needs to be put on hold and tell, and tell the new administrator kind of thing. But you might, you might want to just let them know that. We don't, you know, we didn't budget the money or we removed the allocation.
There was under fifty that was proposed for changes in the twenty five hundred that got taken out.
Yeah.
That happened. But that was to act on the one fifty that was.
So is there any amount budgeted still for that program?
No, I don't think we. You asked him, if I recall, you asked him if you wanted to approach the delegation to have the money. Don't believe he approached the delegation to have the money.
Right, because they have contingency money. That contingency money elapsed anyway, right? That two hundred thousand, they didn't use any of that. The delegation contingency, we moved?
No, 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 it's still there.
That's what I'm saying. Why did you say?
Still there.
No.
Um. But that was last year's two hundred thousand. They didn't use any. So that goes to fund balance, right? The two hundred thousand.
Yeah, though.
Yeah.
We still have line item transfers to discuss.
But so, and I know that in speaking with Elaine, I believe the contractor, whatever was drawn up is good for like a year. So she said it's gonna go into twenty twenty five. So we just, I mean, we can just leave it as is right now. We don't have to, you know, obviously do anything. It still sits there. I don't know what the year mark is, but we have some time.
Yeah, I have interest to, to keep it, but would love to have further discussion later as to how we're gonna find it.
All right, I'm just letting Elaine know to kind of just put it on that.
Back there.
Yeah, talk to the representative and just let her know.
Okay.
Okay.
Any, anything else for new business? Alsa, Allison's?
Hey, hi Drew. So I would like to talk to you about the ice cream that we usually do every year. Um, please. Um, um, so while we would like to keep it in Rockingham County and have somebody, Memories changed ownership and they do not have that anymore. They were one of the last standing ice cream trucks, um, that had, would come out in around and service the area. And we had done Ben and Jerry's, but you had asked me last year to look at something local.
Yeah, well, somebody licked, right?
No, we did, um, we did Memories.
Oh, I thought we were doing licks.
No, um, no licks, um, but Memories came in and did that for us. Um, we have been working over the last, I haven't, but I give hats off to Eileen. She has, um, researched every corner of this county to try to find something. And other than a standard ice cream truck that sells the ice cream bars or something. There's none of that. So, um, she's really gung ho and trying to get actual ice cream from a provider. And she's back to Ben and Jerry's. So we would like permission if we can bring it back next week to have that considered. They only have two dates left in the whole summer that they can offer to us. That's how well known they are. So. I'm just kind of letting you know. It'll be around thirty seven hundred dollars because it'll be all three shifts. Um, they'll scoop and provide for second and third shifts when they come on those days, so we can provide it and freeze it for those folks, but that's coming forward on that. So.
I'm filing it as long as they have.
Where are we pulling the money from? This will probably have to come from our wellness because I can't, I would try to pass it off for Sydney, but I did one year and they said no. Later in the summer, yeah. Kind of a hit with everybody. It's kind of caught on here and it's kind of a separate thing. So.
I think it's a great idea. Ben and Jerry's is delicious.
Yeah, and then, um, that was new business. I do have a business, so.
You have, no more?
Old business.
You have old business?
I do. Uh, Zavino's, um, you approved me for that, the date. Um, we did get the contract. Um, I get it to Leila. She brought it over to, um, Primex. They don't have any comments. I'm assuming, I'm hoping you're not going to have me. It's a very simplified contract. Um, that I don't have to send it out to legal for. It's just for the thing and if it's okay, then. Next week for approvals to sign the contract.
How's the price compared to what we did?
Um, um, we're gonna be less on this going there than we would, but there'll be other provisions that I'm gonna ask the board about, um, just to put. Um, we're gonna be less on this going there than we would, but there'll be other provisions that I'm gonna ask the board about, um, just to put out there. Um, we have over the last two years had requests to have maybe spouses or significant others come. Um, of course, when I looked at that and tried to price it out, it's pretty hefty on that end. But in talking to Zerbinos and stuff like that, we could charge a spouse or a guest money. Um, based on our numbers, we could accommodate the volume. Um, but we would have that lined up in a separate kinda track. They would have to pay ahead of time. Um, we would include taxes, meal taxes in there, cost to that, so we're not absorbing all of that. But um, I I'd need to know that, you know, when I bring this forward next week, we'll put some of that out there and you can guide me on that. Because we want to plan for that now so that we would know and not do it in a last minute thing coming into the fall. Doesn't give us enough time, so we wanna work that out over the summer.
So this is years of service?
Years of service, five, ten, fifteen, up to thirty, forty, yeah, it's a nice.
And it will all be on one evening instead of two?
Selected October twenty third uh for that evening for celebration, so it'll be a nice event. And so, yeah, so, um, I think certain departments would really feel, um, um, would really like to have considered a spouse or a significant other come because they feel it's an accomplishment and they'd like them to be there and participate with their fellow colleagues that hit those milestones.
Is is there a way that we can anticipate how many spouses might be interested? Can we survey or do we have any sense? I mean, I don't. If if we did, then we would, it'd be a little bit more an informed decision. Yeah, twenty percent of the spouses wanna come, I, you know, let's, then I I approve a hundred percent, ninety percent. That might be a difficulty.
Um, I know I have about eighty roughly that are gonna hit their years of service. Mar, we, I'm, I'd have to send it back. I don't know who's gonna be there by the time the years of service event comes. We have people that come and go, you know, people that leave during that period of term. So I could, but some people don't even let us know they're coming to the very last minute, you know. But I could put something out there for those.
Why don't we come back and circle back the wagons next week, find out what the cost would be to give to a spouse? And then figure out, knowing that there's going to be potentially a massive eighty employees, then where we wanna go in terms of, is there, from a budgetary standpoint, cost per meal? Could we subsidize it slightly, knowing that there's probably gonna be, you know, whatever?
What's the capacity?
I think you said there was a hundred and forty, um, ish, a hundred and forty ish. Not everybody. I don't anticipate everyone would bring somebody, just from years past.
So they can accommodate a hundred and forty guests, if that's what we.
Eighty plus sixteen, yeah.
Is this a plated meal and?
Yes, it would be choices. They'd have a fish, uh, fish, uh, um, chicken, steak, something like that. It'll be very nicely done. We can't taste test this place. We tried that, but I don't know what. Okay, so, so thank you for entertaining that. And I'll bring something back.
And just get the numbers compared to last year. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other old business? If not, I'm gonna ask for a public comment. I remember there's somebody in the middle there that's on here. I don't know if they have anything that they wish to comment on.
No comment from me, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see anybody else. We'll take a motion to go into not.
Second.
Okay, on the motion, Chris.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, um, how many do we have, Allison?
I think you have one.
Okay, just, alright, thank you, everybody.
I do.
Have a great Fourth of July, everybody. Good weekend. Okay, folks, we're coming on non-public. Christian Boyle has a couple of motions to.
We have, um, let's see, um, with respect to uh the long-term care. Um, non-public, um, regarding an individual, I move to seal those minutes indefinitely. Cause because it could adversely affect the reputation of someone other than this person.
Sorry. Most of the main executives have taken in a motion, Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
We should not do it.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Move to adjourn?
Most to adjourn. Second, all those people say aye, aye, we are adjourned.